Come to order, the Town of Londonderry zoning board of adjustment for December 18th, 2024. I'd like to welcome everybody and before we start, we're going to go over the meeting procedures. The clerk will read the case into the record. The applicant will come to the front here and make their presentation. The board will address the applicant with any questions or comments. Those that are in favor of the request are given the opportunity to address the board. Those that are opposed or having questions regarding the request are given the opportunity to address the board. The applicant will then be given the opportunity to rebut any opposition and the opposition is given the opportunity for rebuttal. The board addresses the applicant with any additional comments or questions. If there are none, at that time, the public hearing portion regarding the case will be closed, at which time the board will enter into deliberation and vote on the request or continue the case to a future date. Those that wish to speak tonight, please come to the podium, state your name and address for the record. All conversations will be directed through the board to ensure a single line of communication. And we ask that you turn your cell phones to vibrate or turn them off during the meeting. First order is for everyone to introduce themselves. Nick, could you start us off?
I'm Nick Carter, building inspector and zoning administrator.
Hi, Kelly Karen, Assistant Town Manager.
Brendan O'Brien, full member.
Jackie Bernard, full member.
Suzanne Brunel, full member.
Mitch Feig, full member.
Chris Moore, alternate member.
Bob Robichek, alternate member.
And first order of business will be the draft minutes for November 20th. Do I have a motion to approve?
I will make a motion to approve the minutes of November 20th.
Thank you. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Thank you. All those in favor? Aye. Opposed? Do we have any report by the town council liaison this evening? Let the record show, we do not. Regional impact determinations.
Thank you, Madam Chair. The cases before you this evening, staff is recommending that they are not of regional impact.
Thank you. Do I have a motion?
Like to make a motion to accept the regional impact determination.
Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Great. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? This now brings us to our public hearing of cases.
Me to appoint one of them.
Uh, one.
You sure last day?
One.
My last day.
Maybe we should.
Oh, and this is... This is your last... You're still good through?
You didn't resign.
I am not resigned.
Okay, alright.
Until the end of this month.
Okay, thank you.
So I am still.
So I'm going to appoint Chris and Robert.
Nope.
Just one, yes, right. Hold on, I can't even count tonight. Chris, you're going to be appointed for the last time. How's that?
I will be.
Okay, thank you. Alright. Case, first case, please.
Case number 12182024-1, a request for a variance from LZO section 7.6.d.5.a/B to allow three wall signs totaling 97 square feet, whereas one wall sign not exceeding 100 square feet is permitted, and one freestanding sign and six electric vehicle charging station signs, whereas one freestanding sign not exceeding 100 square feet is permitted. The parcel is located at 36 Industrial Drive in the Gateway Business Zoning District. Scanel Properties number 714 LLC owner and Harvey Signs Inc. applicant.
Right here?
Right here.
Yep. Make yourself comfortable. Welcome.
Hello, my name is Kyle Harvey, representing Harvey Signs. We're requesting a variance for the Tesla dealership.
Did you bring your application with you?
Yes.
Okay. So you could either give us an overview or you could go through the five points of law because you have your application there, one through five. You'll read and the question and then you'll read the answer to us. And then if we have any questions, we can ask you or you can just give us an overview first and then do the five points of law after. It's up to you.
I'm... I can pretty much read what's here.
Okay.
Um... It seemed a little bit different than what you said earlier, but the zoning ordinance allows the location to have two wall signs with a combined total of up to 100 square feet and one freestanding sign up to 100 square feet. This project requests approval for three wall signs with a combined total of 96.98 feet squared and one pylon totaling 43.3 square feet and six electric car charging stations totaling 2.4 square feet. The proposed signage will not be contrary to the public interest. The quantity and location of the signs will help facilitate customer egress and wayfinding. The proposed signage is in observance of the spirit of the ordinance. The cumulative square footage of the proposed wall signage is within the 100 square feet allowable limit and the cumulative square footage of the proposed freestanding signage is within the 100 square feet allowable limit. Approval of this variance request will ensure the substantial justice is done. The allowable quantity of signage does not support an establishment requiring a constant replenishment of high-ticket inventory. Adequate signage is essential to compete with the automotive industry. This proposed sign package is in harmony with modern automotive dealership signage and consistent with the Tesla brand. The values of the signage surrounding properties are not diminished. Tesla is an established high-end luxury automobile brand. The proposed signage package reflects the brand's elegant design and refined materials. Okay, and the last, nothing. This property has frontage on two roads, industrial and Pettingill Road. Pettingill offers greater public exposure and advertisement with eastbound traffic coming from Route 3 and the Everett Turnpike. However, the only entrance to this property is located on industrial more than 300 feet from the intersection. The median on Pettingill adds difficulty to eastbound egress for customers and deliveries. This creates unnecessary hardship for both visibility and egress. The proposed sign package adequately addresses this unique hardship by increasing visibility and egress on Pettingill Road. With this variance, eastbound traffic can more easily identify the Tesla dealership and proceed to the traffic light at the intersection of Industrial Drive. That's it.
Are there any questions from the board?
Think we need... To clarify?
What would you like clarified?
You had stated that it was different.
Yeah, the first...
Right.
What you just said was like one sign up to 100 square feet and what I had, I mean, I didn't fill this out. My cousin who does this filled this out and he said two wall signs combined total of 100 square feet is what you had in the ordinance.
Okay, okay.
But what you guys just said up there was one, one sign. We're trying to get three signs, though. Underneath that allotted 100 square feet. I mean, if it makes any difference, the service sign is not lit, so I know that doesn't, I don't know if that really matters.
Not in this case, but yeah, the way that it is stated in the zoning code is one freestanding sign for each developed parcel not to exceed 100 square feet of total signed face area allowed. 25% may be used for changeable signage, sorry.
Okay.
The second part of it is the one wall or face sign for each occupant within the developed parcel. Said sign shall not exceed a total of 100 square feet, so both of them, in that case, is what you're here for.
Mm-hmm. Just confused, I don't know where you got that, but yeah. Um... I mean, it is three signs. Technically, if they were to put the logo right next to the Tesla, that would pretty much make it one sign, but they wanted to spread them out, so that does make it three signs total. And then there's a service sign as well.
So the image that we have here, because we have a lot in our packet here that you provided for us. So is this the depiction of the signs that you're asking for and their locations? So that we can just clarify for everybody? Because I see where the signs will be visible from Pettingill. The entrance is on industrial, but it'll be visible on the Pettingill side.
I believe so. I can't read that from down here. Yeah, it'll be visible from the Pettingill Road.
And the three additional signs are these.
On the right there?
Here?
Yes.
One, two, three?
Yes.
Okay, and is this the one... Where's the charging stations?
It's the one on the bottom there.
Here?
Yeah, those are just like small, little parking lot signs.
Okay, so these are the charging stations and those are the others that you referenced.
And then there's a pylon sign over there, yes.
And then what is this?
That's the one freestanding.
That's the freestanding pylon sign?
Okay.
Monument sign, whatever you want to call that.
Alright.
Madam Chair?
Yes.
Just for clarity, they are permitted to have two signs.
Right.
Because they're facing two different.
Because they're two.
Oh, is that where?
You have two facing streets.
I was kind of confused there.
Yeah. Okay, thank you.
Nick, can I ask you a question real quick? The charging station signs that are going to be, you know, two and a half square feet, those, I'm assuming, are very similar in nature to like handicap signs and stuff like that that you would put in front of a parking space. Are those still subject to these same requirements?
They would be because we don't have anything in our ordinance about charging station signs.
Okay.
It was not a thing when we had our.
Yeah. They're slightly different, I think, than like a handicap sign because there is a charging station associated with it. So it's probably a little bit larger. It's not quite meeting the definition of like a wayfinding sign.
There's a picture of it in the package.
Right, and I'm looking at it up there too, but I just...
Just that's the difference between like a handicap sign.
Do we have any other questions from the board?
I was just going to ask, does our ordinance even address handicap signs or is that just, you know, nobody seems to argue with the need for those?
Handicap signs are required.
Okay.
Whereas charging station signs are not.
So that's the distinction.
Susan made a good point. It wasn't a thing when the...
No.
The last time ordinance was checked. Not a thing. Okay, so we...
Another update.
Yeah, another update. And we're all set. I'd like to take it out to the audience. If anyone is in favor of the applicant that would like to speak? Let the record show, there is no one. Is there anyone in opposition that would like to speak? And there was no one. Take it back to the board. We're good?
Yeah.
Okay. At this time, we have no more questions for you. We'll go into deliberations. Do we need to hash anything out or can we go into the five points of law, everybody?
I'm fine going to the five points.
Good?
Yeah, me too.
Alright, let's go.
Granted the variance, would or would not be contrary to the public interest because?
I would say would not.
Because?
Because I believe that... It's not contrary to public interest. It doesn't have any...
Wouldn't alter the character of the neighborhood. Okay.
Spirit of the ordinance is observed.
I agree.
I agree.
I agree.
Spirit of the ordinance would or would not be observed because?
I would say it would.
I would agree.
I agree.
Agree. It would not pose any health or safety or welfare concerns.
Actually, the opposite.
It will actually increase safety.
Agreed. Granted the variance, would or would not do substantial justice because?
I would say it would. I think the loss to the applicant is greater than any gain to the public by denying the application.
I agree.
I agree.
I agree with that as well.
For the following reasons, the values surrounding properties would or would not be diminished. I'd say they would not.
Would not.
An industrial area with large buildings.
We need more elegant design and refined materials.
I agree.
Owing to special conditions of the property that distinguish it from other properties in the area, denial of the variance would result in unnecessary hardship because A1, there is or is not a fair and substantial relationship between the general public purpose of the ordinance provision and the specific application of that provision of the property because?
I'd say it's not.
I agree.
I agree.
It's a large lot that borders two different roads.
He would answer her.
Two different big roads.
Yep, frontage on two roads, yep.
It talks about the median as well.
Yep.
There's a lot going on right there.
There's a lot going on there.
The proposed use is or is not a reasonable one because I would say it is, signs are reasonable.
It is. I agree.
Comments, restrictions?
I have none.
I have none.
Okay. Do I have a motion?
Like to make a motion in case number 12182024-1 to grant the request for a variance.
Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Thank you. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed?
In case number 12182024-1, the request for a variance was granted.
You're all set, sir?
Perfect.
Have a good evening.
You too.
It's good. I think that's all you really need anyway.
There you go, sir.
Ready for the next one?
Ready for the next case?
Case number 12182024-2, a request for a variance from LZO section 4.2.1.3.C.1 to allow replacement stairs to encroach into the 40-foot front setback. The parcel is located at 9 Grapeview Circle in the AR1 zoning district. Tax map 9, lot 11-4. Sean Martin, owner and applicant.
Hi, Sean Martin, 9 Grapevine Circle.
Welcome.
Thank you.
Did you bring your paperwork with you, your application?
Yes.
You can present it through the five points of law or you could give us a preview. It's whatever you'd like.
Okay. I'm just trying to replace precast cement stairs that collapsed with wooden structure. We've tried to hire a couple of the precast companies to replace the stairs and they said the crane doesn't reach, so this is the only alternative that we have.
Okay. So do you want to go through the five points of law? Just read the questions one through five and what your answer is, your response.
The variance will not be contrary to the public interest. The variance will not be contrary to the public interest replacing collapsed precast cement landing with stairs. The spirit of the ordinance is observed. The spirit of the ordinance is observed. Replacing existing stairs will be within the front 40-foot setback. Substantial justice is done. It does not cause harm to the general public. The values of surrounding properties are not diminished. The values of surrounding properties are not diminished. Replacing existing collapsed precast cement stairs with new. Literal enforcement of the provisions of the ordinance would result in unnecessary hardship. For purposes of this subparaphrase, unnecessary hardship means that owing to special conditions of the property that distinguish it from other properties in the area, no fair and substantial relationship exists between the general public purposes of the ordinance provision and the specific application of that provision to the property. And replacing my front stairs is within my 40-foot setback. The proposed use is a reasonable one. Replacing the front stairs is a reasonable use. If the criteria in subparagraph A are not established, an unnecessary hardship will be deemed to exist if, only if, owing to special conditions of the property that distinguish it from other properties in the area, the property cannot be reasonably used in strict conformance with the ordinance and a variance is therefore necessary to enable a reasonable use of it. There is no unnecessary hardship replacing stairs within the front 40-foot setback.
Nick, the picture I see of this property, it seems like it's so far back, so maybe I have the wrong picture.
Think the scale shows 40 feet?
No, you got the right one.
I do have the right one?
I think it's just that the property line starts way off the road.
Right. Okay.
It's probably, has to do with the right way with...
Probably an easement.
Or something.
Okay, alright. It just looked like a lot of land and I'm not sure why you were here, okay? I just want to clarify that before we like even started this. What year is this house?
I believe it was built in 1986.
Eighty-six, okay.
And I'm thinking that the precast was probably installed while the development was being built and they could pull onto another person's property because the grade of our front yard goes up really steep to it.
I was gonna say, maybe that's the illusion that I'm seeing because of that.
It goes, it's steep.
It's steep and that's why.
You can't get crane on it.
Phew, okay. Do we have any questions of the applicants?
So how big is the encroachment? It doesn't look...
How big would the new stairs?
Is the entire thing in the 40-foot setback? The entire proposed stairway?
My house is right at the 40-foot setback, so yes.
The entire, the entire.
Your stairs were already non-conforming, correct?
Correct.
Yeah.
Back in eighty-six.
Right.
Okay. So how many feet into the 40-foot setback are you?
Um, well, it's, I think, four feet. Four feet landing maybe with stairs?
So you're saying the house is right at the edge and then the stairs go four feet in?
Right.
Okay.
So the old stairs collapsed.
Yes.
Now you're putting new stairs, but you're putting it in exactly where the old stairs were?
Correct.
You're not bringing it out further or anything? You're just replacing with another material?
Correct.
Any other questions?
But he still has to be here because it's a different material.
Because he's replacing it.
Well, because it's not exactly attached to the house now.
Because it's, it's a... As soon as you alter it, you have to... Go ahead.
There's a provision in the ordinance that specifically calls out altering.
Right.
Okay.
A pre-existing nonconformity.
So because you can't repair the existing exactly as it was?
Right, it's not, it's pre-ex... It's non-conforming, pre-existing. But now it's being replaced, so that's why he's here.
Got it.
Good. Any other questions?
I'm good.
I just think when we're making whichever motion we make, that we should be indicating how many feet is going into it and nowhere here is there any real information.
Are you comfortable with four feet or like do you know that for certain?
Well, I think the landing is four feet with the steps coming down.
Okay. Nick, how many feet do you think this is?
I'd have to look at how high off the ground it is, but the platform would be four feet.
Right.
So the steps are going to be more than four?
Yeah, how many steps? Are you showing them one?
It's probably about seven and a half to eight feet total.
I believe there's five steps total.
So it's one foot a step, so it's like... Yeah, it's like nine, 10 feet. So nine feet minimum.
If his house is one foot in the setback and we grant...
I know, I know.
It would be a nine-foot minimum length of that and if you're right on the property line, you said?
I'm sorry?
You're right on the property line right now with your house?
It's at the 40-foot setback according to the...
So it's nine feet, approximately nine feet.
Yeah.
We're going off on map geo, though.
I would not put it, my advice is not to put a direct number to it, but say approximately or, you know, something like that.
Or ask for more.
Yeah.
Or say 10 feet.
Ten feet.
Yeah, and then that way we cover.
Right.
I agree with that.
Okay, I agree with that as well. Okay.
That's all I have.
Do we need him to amend the request?
Nope, we can address it with conditions.
Okay.
Any other questions? I'm good. Okay. Take it out to the audience. Is there anyone here that would like to speak in favor of the applicant? Let the record show that no one is here for that. Anyone in opposition that would like to speak? Let the record show, there's no one here in opposition. Take it one last time back to the board. Alright, we have no other questions of you. Thank you. At this time, we'll close the public portion of this hearing. Are we all set to go into the five points?
Good.
Okay.
Granted the variance, would or would not be contrary to the public interest because? I would say would not. I agree.
I agree.
Doesn't alter the character of the neighborhood.
I would agree.
Spirit of the ordinance would or would not be observed because?
I'd say would. Doesn't change the health, safety. I agree.
I agree.
I would agree with that. Not accessible steps might improve it.
Yeah, I'd say.
Granted the variance, would or would not do substantial justice because I would say it would. I think the loss to the applicant is greater than any gain to the public.
I would.
I agree.
Agreed.
For the following reasons, the values surrounding properties would or would not be diminished. I would say would not. Stairs do not diminish.
I would agree.
I agree.
Owing to special conditions of the property that distinguish it from other properties in the area, denial of the variance would result in unnecessary hardship because A1, there is or is not a fair and substantial relationship between the general public purpose of the ordinance provision and the specific application of that provision of the property because? I would say there is not.
Agree.
The house is... Well, the house is built
Right.
Right to the edge of the 40-foot front setback.
Exactly.
Compared to the other houses in the neighborhood.
The other houses are set farther back.
Are they?
Looks like it.
Okay.
Yeah. I looked on Google Maps and everything else is actually set like twice as far back.
And we have to allow him to come into his front door.
That's true.
All people are allowed a front door.
Not everyone's allowed stairs to it, about.
Proposed use is or is not a reasonable one?
It is.
Stairs are reasonable.
I would agree.
Comments, restrictions?
Okay, so this is where we deal with the, um, measurement.
Yep.
So I would say not to exceed 10 feet into the 40-foot setback?
I agree.
I would agree with that. I noticed.
Okay. Do I have a motion?
Like to make a motion in case number 12182024-2 to grant the request for a variance with the condition that the encroachment is not to exceed 10 feet into the front setback.
And do I have a second?
Jackie, I'd also like to second this one.
Thank you. All those in favor? Aye. Opposed?
In case number 12182024-2, the request for variance was granted with the condition